All right, we'll call this committee meeting together. And turn it over to Rick Morris for him to move forward on what we stopped last time.
Matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, a few House meeting orders. If you weren't at the last month's meeting, on the back, we have the pack that we looked up for last month. It's the draft policies. He's in the map appendix behind it. We also have the agenda. We also have the comments which were made last time in the packet from the last meeting that are included. We got about three quarters of the way through them. What we're going to do is try to continue from the point where we left off and then get into some land use discussion. And if anything else anybody else to talk about, it'll be open. All right. The last one we left off on, I think the one prior to that was talking about the school and whether or not it was at capacity. And we got to that and the only comment we had was that it has to be kind of the school set to the use, close to capacity and some work or the other. As a matter of fact, I'll read that comment. Says, aren't schools at capacity? Policies count to work. We look at school boards and encourage school location decisions that support communities overall growth and development plans. We had probably a point in that discussion on that, or 10 minutes, I should say. Need open channels of comments, need open channels of communication. Schools are on the verge of capacity, especially the high school, according to the game between commissioners and school boards. What would be helpful in that comment? The next comment was the next issue that was raised at one of meetings. And this all had to do with all the cities. Get the buildings in Hamilton, Pine Mountain, Waverly Hall, Shiloh, communities with town centers, but that was the elderly and some of the others as well, up the codes of business that they can. I'll add a little few there right now. When you came into Hamilton tonight, you noticed there's construction going on on a two-story building with a nice porch up top and everything. And so, you know, all of the communities, Pine Mountain has been for, you know, years working on it downtown. It's recently been working on its housing. Hamilton's been working on their town center, obviously, within the last several years. A lot of their buildings have been brought up and they're in the process of being brought up. Shiloh, as best as I can remember, they have one or two right along the strip that probably needs some work. They're discussing that right now, as well as the new city hall combination, fire station slash municipal building. Matter of fact, in Shiloh, I think it's next week they'll be having a meeting about that. So, you know, all are interested in taking what they have, especially their town centers, and making them all look a little bit better so when people drive by, they go, isn't that cute? That's nice. And so, Waverly Hall, I think they might have one or two buildings in the town center area. Now, residentially, they have a lot of homes, not a lot, but they have a few homes where we just did a project, we did a street manage project. And there were several people in that area that were interested in getting their homes refurbished. And we have a lot of interest out in the region, but also even a little bit in Harris County as far as the communities are concerned. Now, Jim, I know you're here. I don't hardly ever ask you to say anything, but did you want to talk about the fine things in Pine Mountain as far as your downtown and some of the rehab work you're doing and other things?
Well, on the housing part, we finished a chip program. And so, they've got five homes fully up code that were for folks low moderate income, most of retirees. And that's got these good folks that go a lot. We've got several projects going downtown, including ways signage improvements. Just chipping away at items a little bit at a time.
And I know we've been in discussions with Brian too about signs and other things and just making general improvements. So, you know, a lot of things, and that all, a lot of that all just stemmed from the last comp plan we did in Pine Mountain. A lot of that, a lot of those things are in motion. And...
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask you, Jim, how are you paying for those things, those improvements? Are you doing it out of your general fund? I know you just said grants for the homes.
It's a combination thing. We've had some help with some parts out of George Powell on economic development grant. We've done some out of general fund. It's a little left pocket, right pocket. So, just bring us up a couple of downs that will fit that, that particular project.
That comment, I think it was from one of our, it was from the second meeting when we got that comment. Any other generalizations or comments about, you know, the cities of downtown and the way they look or feel or anything else you would like to see the cities partake in from a development standpoint, connectivity standpoint? Any way to make the community better? All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Now, this is one hopefully we'll get a lot of comments on. I had several comments about recreation, and they were all in different formats. Recreation facilities, ecotourism, bike paths, destination points. And I put them all over the one heading, under the one heading, regional focus on nature-based tourism and habitat preservation. We had comments about FDR Park. And if I remember correctly, they were talking about increasing the visitation there. It's my understanding it was brought up as one of the busier parks in the state. But still, you know, what else can you add to it and how can we get more people there? We talked about the biodiversity of Mulberry Creek. And so, under those four items, you know, we had two draft policies here again. The protection and conservation of Harris County's natural cultural resources will play an important role in decision-making process when addressing issues about future growth and development. Now, here again, you can, you know, discuss what's an important role. I'm sure now when the communities, you know, when they're taking, making zoning decisions, we don't have a lot of zoning work in the cities, but we do have maybe two cases a year if that, in Hamilton. I work with them. I'm not quite sure about Pine Mountain, Waverly Hall, and Shiloh doesn't have none. The other policy, we're with federal, state, local, private, and nonprofit organizations to promote Harris County's cultural and natural resources. And that's something I would say that the communities need to know.
One of the things that Mulberry Creek is in Perry Creek. And they are, Mountain Oak Creek is in Perry Creek also. And what they're trying to do with Oak, not Oak Creek, is two rivers. Council has applied for a grant to clean it up.
Impaired meaning they're...
They're basically too much equalize in it. And a lot of, they tried to relate it to originally to cattle, and there's no cattle basically in that area. And then they said, dear, but it just basically, the creek dries up, you know, in September and October.
Are they 303D listed streams?
I'm sorry?
Are they 303 listed, 303D listed streams by the state? When you say impaired?
They are listed by...
So, 303D. And when you say Mulberry Creek, it's not the entire creek, it's a stream or creek running into Mulberry Creek? Maybe we could clarify, because I'm not sure if all Mulberry Creek is classified under 303D, but there could be streams running into Mulberry Creek themselves and maybe listed.
Wasn't the whole, the creek itself impaired or through a little challenge?
I don't know. I know they're doing that study.
But we could clarify that. I mean, that may be just a point clarification.
With the state, I think impaired is the whole creek.
Thank you.
So, if the state, as it makes it impaired, are there state monies to assist in the cleaning up? Have we applied for any of those, do you know?
Mountain Oak Creek did it. They have, and...
Where's Mountain Oak Creek?
Callaway Gardens. It runs from Callaway, runs from, of course, back beyond Callaway Gardens, through Callaway Gardens, through Edenmont, and comes out.
Interstate.
Looks still, looks still. The only portion of that that turned out to be impaired was like where it crosses 103 in September and October. But it has to, if it becomes impaired, it has to, all of it has to pass for the whole year.
Let me add a few things. We did a lot of testing on the creeks. Lance Renfro, formerly of our staff, he initiated a lot of that. And then Laura Schneider, who's a Harris County, she's taking that over and continuing. And once you do your test, in most cases, it's fecal. And at some point in time, we may even start testing for lead and other metals and things like that, but who knows? But now it's fecal coliform. You test, they check the part per million, et cetera. And then if it's listed by the state, you go from there. The second step is then you apply for money, you apply for money to do the testing, then you apply for money to do the mitigation strategy and how to implement maybe some of those things. And so, and a lot of that money, I come from state EPD, and then most of that transcends down. Some of it, state produce, a lot of it transcends down from the federal government as well as far as the testing and mitigation plan.
Who applies?
We write the applications, but we do resolutions with the communities in most cases, if I'm here then, if I'm not mistaken. Should have brought my environmental plan. You know, we'll contract, and get resolution from the community, and then we'll contract with the community to do the testing. Is normally the way it proceeds.
And I think you also have a restoration plan with specific milestones to report back to the state and process. What you're going to do, how you're going to do, and then establish milestones for them to benchmark on.
Who would have done that for that?
I think Lance, I know, if I'm not mistaken, Lance did work on Mountain Oak, and that was probably five, five, six, seven years ago. Now, I don't know if they...
It was probably closer to eight.
Eight, yeah, eight years ago.
And he, when he was at Two, he just left Two Rivers or was about to leave Two Rivers. And he had applied for the mitigation, you know?
He has applied?
Yeah.
So, it's been eight years and they're just now mitigating, applying for money to mitigate?
It takes, it took at least two years to go through and do the study.
It's two years, and then depending on state numbers, there's other streams that we may go and test to see if they're impaired. And then in many cases, you'll start that cycle of mitigation or trying to get the grants for mitigation. All right. Anything on policies in general as, you know, as far as development? That interaction between the natural resources and development. You know, you've got state rules with setbacks and, you know, you have your wetland regulations, you have your floodplain regulations. There are a lot of things that are already in place to begin with. And so, there are things to help protect those streams. And I know that Harris County has a good enforcement program. That's really where it meets the road, is do you have the regulations to, did you adopt the regulations to do the enforcement? And if so, are you doing any enforcement? But any comments on further protection, I guess it's, or less protection? I don't, I don't know if we want to go less than what the state requires. Most of our communities have been happy with just what the state requires as far as buffering and things of that nature. Other communities have gone on and required a little bit more, or they've actually gone in and purchased land and things like that. But, you know, any, like I said, any thoughts on that interaction, development, protection, you know, et cetera?
Would that be something we might put in the plan when we start doing our ordinance work, making reference back to that, that we may have some impaired streams and some of the actions or practices we might take or to try and address those?
I would think it would be pertinent to list the impaired streams because we do have an environmental section.
Right.
When they collapsed the regulations in 2008, less than what we had to do, we didn't even have to put those in there, but we decided to keep those in there. And we can do a little expansion, just like on the economic development section and some other things. But yes, they deserve reference in your comprehensive plan because at some point in time, if there was some sort of development issue with a stream or a wetland or what have you, you know, you can always reference back to the plan and say, well, we know there's some impairment there. We've discussed this. And then even in a policy, we possibly address that relationship. It's just, you know, how much farther, you know, you would want to go or what you would want to put in implementation measures as far as, you know, any type of protection, you know? And it can just be as simple there again as state regs and whatever local regulations we have, so. Man, y'all are scaring me now. All right, let's go to the board. Growth areas, and this is from the second meeting, first meeting and second meeting. And of course, on the existing future development map, you know, we all talked about the, it has I-85 corridor, that should be I-185 corridor. I'm sure I typed that. I don't type well. And we talked about, I know on the last plan, we talked about the Southern Third. And if you look at the future development map, you know, Southern Third is the area. And that's basically, if I'm 315 down and over, was the area where, based on our surveys that we did and sent out, so not only the plan in 2008, but what we did in 2014, was a spot where people were very interested in continuing, you know, a growth pattern. And so, the policy maximized the growth potential of the I-185, I gotta write that time, I-185 corridor, State Route 103 corridor, State Route 315 corridor, and the Southern Third of the county while encouraging mixed use development under a human scale and hopefully less auto-oriented. And that was the whole idea with the plan unit development off of...
315.
Thank you. You know, hopefully, when you have mixed uses and residences, the whole idea is to capture more auto-related trips. In other words, people don't have to go out and drive 20 miles to get to the grocery store because maybe the development's large enough that it has a time grocery store. So, that's the whole idea of the auto-oriented, negating a little bit of all those trips on, on the busy routes. The next policy, Harris County supports new land uses that contribute to protecting the environment and preserve meaningful open space. And a lot of that would be in your plan unit development. Brian, what do you, y'all are doing a residential plan, RPU. You had a plan unit development, right? PUD?
Yeah, RP, PRD would be the planned residential development, but it's under the PUD.
Okay. All right. And did you all, I can't remember, were y'all looking at doing one like for just commercial facilities or anything like that, or just, I mean, be a mixed, multi-commercial, et cetera?
There's a PCD and a PMD as well.
Okay. All right. And does that, do y'all look to require some level of open space or...
No, they require a certain amount of acreage.
Okay.
But no open space. They're not like conservation subdivisions. We do not have those in our ordinance.
All right. Any comments on second policy? And preserve meaningful open space. Let me ask you all this, if you, if your PUD or, you know, your PRD, PUD, whatever you want to call them, if those ordinances did require a certain amount set aside for open space? You know, the whole idea is you allow increased density. And as part of allowing that increased density, of course, needs orders that are, as part of allowing that increased density, there's a little open space, space set aside. Whether that's 5%, 10%?
No, the PRD, the new PRD plan that we're coming up with will have that.
Okay.
We're actually in the process of, the text amendment.
All right. How much, did you have, you all decided on how much you're going to require to be set aside?
I can't recall. Lost time ahead.
Okay. I'll let the House and make the change. Next policy, encourage development that is sensitive to the historic context, sense of place in overall setting of the community.
Gateways and corridors.
Oh, sorry. All right. Gateways and corridors will create a sense of place for Harris County. You know, one of the things, you know, your gateways are, well, really I-185. State routes we mentioned, 103, 315.
27.
27. Or any of the major...
Lady 5.
Yeah. You know, all of those and what we've done, I know what we did last time in the Pine Mountain, plan on 27. We did an overlay district for 27. Actually had two different ones, one for right downtown and then one once you get outside of downtown. And the district really just added some dimensions of aesthetics. You know, this is sort of the look that you want. This is the feel that you want. When you're coming in 116, when you're coming into Hamilton, and you go by Blue Springs, I think it is, the Magnolia Lane section where they just sort of drape over the road. I mean, it's absolutely beautiful. You know, is that something that if you had an overlay district, is that something that you'd want to preserve? Some of that's probably hanging in the right of way. But it's just beautiful when you drive through there, and it's something you remember, you know? And I think that's all called down to Callaway Conservation Corridor. You could have an overlay district called the Callaway Conservation Overlay District. You know, you can design one of those, put it in your zoning ordinance, and if they're assi, oh gosh, aesthetic things that you want to take care of, most of the time, you can do them either in your ordinance or with a combination of an overlay district. And it all depends if there's a feel you want to, you know, to maintain. And as you're riding down the, like I said, as you're riding down 116, it's not that you're not going to see development, but it's, it's very similar to what I asked in, asked in Hamilton when we did Sweet Bay. I said, you know, D your entrance, make it look really nice and sort of cover so you can't really see up into it, but it piques people's curiosity. And it's a great entrance. You know, you ride by it, you go, you know, that's a nice looking entrance. I'm not sure if it's developed the way some people wished it would have developed, but the entrance itself, when you ride by it, it makes me want to ride up in there. As a matter of fact, I did twice last week, just so I could go back through the development and see how it's developing. You know, it's, it's trying to maintain a sense of feel, a look, you know, something that you like. And when we're talking about doing cognitive mapping or, you know, marking some things on the maps, that's part of the thing that we want people to mark, what's special, what's not special? What do you think when you ride down the road, you go, boy, this is really nice, like to maintain that? And so, those are sort of the things that we want to try and get at. Yes, ma'am?
So, yes, very much on 219, we're out between the passing lanes, there's a tunnel that we all love driving through. Those people can feel that we would like to maintain. On Avenue 27, when I moved here 20 years ago, those people can feel on 27 before they make clear effect on certain sections. So, are you saying that if they're able to protect those in the certain feet off the road?
Well, there's only, there's only so much inside, especially the DOT inside those rightways, you know, that they own.
I don't think this was DOT. I mean, DOT would be on 219, but on 27, that was just land, what land under.
Yeah, State Route 27, US 27. Yeah, that's, I think that's DOT, that's State Route, so. Yeah, they, you know, they can be, they can be difficult, or I won't say difficult, but very staunch in obviously what they can do within the rightways. I can give you an example, and Allison, I'm going to have you address this. Off JR Allen, what just happened in Columbus where they had the tree cutting of, and they had reached an agreement several year, way back when, that they would be able to plant those trees on the rightway to create that dense buffer between JR Allen and the commercial buildings on the other side. And they went in and fended out, and my DOT went in and tree cut, fended it out.
I don't, it wasn't DOT that cut it out. It was the owner of the property who entered into the agreement to cut down the trees, the tree not cut down, and so, and he's paid for that.
And they did that, it was a tree swamp?
Yes. And they have an department of court that that was brought to, so they were able to adjudicate it.
So, you have to find the balance here, you know, when you go down 185 of Harris County, it's, it's really pretty because there are no billboards and there's no, there's no commercial environment. It's just a nice relaxing ride through there. So, then we talk about developing those exits. Well, people are going to have to know what's there, so then you're going to introduce the advertising of those commercials. So, I think we do need to talk about what do we want that corridor to look like if we support and encourage development of those exits when and if we get sewer and water where it needs to be. And I think this is a good place to do that. I know Columbus does have some overlay issues on 185 that they're protecting.
And 185, since it's been designated City Bible from Truitt County on down Harris County some years ago.
So, what does that mean?
They had to pass some signed ordinances in regard to 185. All the local governments that charge that corridor had to. Beyond that, I don't know what was specifically in that.
No billboard, no boards.
No billboards, troop cam, no billboards. I don't know. It's been so far, I don't remember.
We'll probably review that as part of this and see exactly what that's agreed to say so that we know what we're doing with it as we begin thinking about those exits.
And we might have a possibility with the new technology, technologies coming, that billboards may be a thing of the past, slowly going down with declining with all the GPS systems and finding information. You can go now, where are the gas stations, where are the food sources? It's not on your map. And is there really a need for billboards anymore? I'm sure they're going to be around for a while, but I'm sure the companies, corporations in Billboards are saying they're not going to let it wait, but...
I mean, we want to protect that beautiful corridor through our county, I think, as much as we can. And, you know, other corridors in the county, the county roads that are well-traveled, we're going to really have to step up how we maintain and keep those. And we have constant complaints about the upkeep of the rights of way, and yet some of those county roads are pretty busy corridors. So, we have to think about, what do people think when they ride through here, county can't even maintain the rights of way?
You know, I would like to, you know, I have family that come down from Delaware all the time, Maryland and Virginia. And I've mentioned this before, I mentioned Pine Mountain, they all love Pine Mountain. But when we ride down I-185, because we're right, it's US State Route 13, and it's, it's sign after sign after sign after sign. And the interstate systems are fairly similar up there as well, just like in Atlanta. And we come down I-185, they always ask me, well, how'd y'all manage to, how do communities manage to do that without any billboards? I go, it looks nice. You know, how'd you do that? Ah, ah, I tell them, I got nothing. But anyway, I do have a little information, which I give them obviously, but, but they reference it. They, they notice it, and, and I'm sure it's just not my family, you know, as well, so. Alright, any other comments?
Well, I'm all for beautification and being beautiful, but I'm really just getting stolen private land on it. They can't cut down a tree on that property.
Well, like, I know in Columbus, this is a situation where they agreed. You know, they, they worked out an arrangement, well, yeah, we'll, we'll keep this, and we'll do this for so many years. And I don't know if it's, like I said, you said it went to environmental court, John, but I don't know how they, they were going to try to come to some sort of consensus and agreement.
They're rewriting right now, I think that Henson, the attorney, is working with them to address the, uh, your personal property, how to do that, and have to volunteer. But, so you contribute to the community, it's not just whole way, we're going to take your personal property or it's away from you. Those are your trees, but have you cooperate to maintain that aesthetic feel or whatever it is that you're trying to save. Not just allow someone coming in there just full-heartedly just trying to...
Well, I understand that, but if I have a piece of property, I want to cut down a tree, I don't want a zoning ordinance or a rule or a plan that tells me you got to go jump through hoops and go up here and talk to people about cutting down the tree.
I understand.
I like we're talking mostly about bicycle.
Yeah, you got to have some give and take and have some common sense on this approach. Because on a commercial building on 185, you can, I'm sure there are places, I've been up the northeast too, there's some beautiful places that still have a combination of both. So, I mean, that's what you need to have, is some smart planning.
You got to figure out what the balance is.
That's right.
And how, because you can infer what your signs look like, so they're, they're signs, but they're more aesthetically.
And it is still, I mean, I understand technology, but a sign is a pretty effective tool.
It's inexpensive.
It is. And to get back to that, you know, what we're really talking about is maybe some design measures that help to mitigate. It's not to sit there and just look and say, well, you know, one, we couldn't tell you to not cut down that tree on the proper property. We'd have to at least probably buy it from them. But it's more about design measures and trying to figure out ways where you, everybody sort of gets what they want. You know, if you, you can do it this way, like with Sweet Bay, you know, like I said, I loved how they did that entrance. And they could have done it a thousand other ways. And they said, well, alright, yeah, well, you know, we want a good presentation for people that are riding by. It makes our development attractive. And they did that entrance, and, and I love it, and I applaud them for doing that. Uh, other people might have, might have thought that. So it's more about design concepts, and do you, you know, how are you going to manage your right of ways, especially the county right of ways? But you can work with the state as well, you know, to do more right of way management. Uh, you know, I, I would, I would hate to think that on 116, which is a state route, especially where all those beautiful magnolias are, that if any of those were in the right of way, that they might want to take them down. But, uh, but you know, that, that would, I would assume be their, be their right, so. But it's, it's more about design concept and trying to figure out some ways to get everybody what they need, but to make it look as good as you can while you're doing it.
Put the note that we'll review that.
City byway?
That's what it calls scenic byway, what?
Um, I put in the corridor management, uh, that would have been the overall thing, but I believe it was scenic byway sign.
Alright, Linda, you got comments?
But, um, 27 is a project that's going to be moving its way into Harris County. And I think that that gives us an opportunity to look at what we want. That's going to be the gateway, and their, their ninety overlay design is that we ought to look at as it, as it, before it gets here, what we want that to look like.
So, what we would have to do is identify it as a gateway, from point A to point wherever B. And, you know, you mentioned that in the plan, and then it goes from there as far as policy ordinances, et cetera, if anything. Yes, sir?
Valley, the city of Valley did something similar on 5 James Parkway. They, they went through a whole, even the most expensive one I've seen recently was in Memphis. They did it on 16 and Fullboro and all of that. They got multiple overlays up there. Now, that, that is definitely crossing the line, in my opinion, I mean, it's very specific. But if you want to look at the paths and what they have done recently, and then 1 on 5 James was done, and they thought Influx and Kia and Rack, all, all that was coming to, I was looking for growth, this is kind of what we're looking at.
I haven't been on 5 James in quite some time, even though I live right outside of Westmoreland. I'll have to check that one out, Influx. What did they get, did they just go in and do, uh, bike access and then landscaping and curb cuts and...
Well, Calhwood County, they did, they're extensive on what you can and can't do, how close to the road, what kind of property you can, I mean, it, it is, uh...
Give you a headache?
It's overreach. 5 James, I probably haven't looked at it in ten years.
Yeah.
They did it back in the 08, 09, somewhere in there. But, uh, they were expecting that growth, and it just hasn't happened yet. There have been some things that have come there, but it, it addresses ingress, egress, uh, natural, the natural look, commercial resident, it addressed all of that, right through there.
It's, it's amazing, I mean, you go on the internet and put in, uh, highway road design, streetscape plans, normally what's streetscape plan, and, and you'll see these photographs that they'll take of, you know, how it looks currently, which is, well, to be frank, I, it's industrious, but it, it doesn't look the greatest, but, you know, everybody has a different opinion. And then what it looks like after they do those streetscape improvements. And, you know, they address parking, private parking with, with the cities and public parking, and, but it's, it's like a complete 360. And, you know, the plan won't necessarily address that, other than, hey, this is, these are our gateways, and, and these are some things we, we want to consider and hopefully do. And, you know, as you, as you get into the implementation measures or something like that, that's when, you know, the design people bring in all the design elements and everything else. But you have to have some sort of framework of, you know, this is, this is what we would like to see. And, and that your plan can have that. And in general, this is sort of what the look we would like, so.
These beautification corridors that you keep talking about, specifically the young lady that mentioned the one down here on 27, just north of Catalina, when they came through and they cleared about eighty acres right there, they cleared it right up to the fence, right up to their property line, and left just a single strand of trees right there. In Noonan, in Calhwood County, that makes you hold a hundred feet, a hundred-foot buffer from that state right of way, if you're timbering. In certain areas. Again, it goes back to overlay districts where this is right as you're coming in on 20, the continuation of 27, as you're coming into downtown, right there through the historic district, historic homes district, um, they made them keep a hundred feet off, a hundred-foot vegetative buffer. They couldn't touch it.
So you got to be careful in that, in the city, because sometimes it's a little bit overreaching, and it's, it's going to scare people off.
Yeah, it'll run, you're trying to, you know, to open the door to have a little bit of development. That's, that's from one extreme to the other.
And this was just timbered. This is the guy that wanted to timber his lane.
Yeah.
There was no development going on. It was just flat-out timbered, and that made him stay a hundred feet off.
And so that was a hundred feet on his property?
A hundred feet on his property.
Not to, we're talking about right of way or anything else like that, part of it.
Hundred foot buffer.
It's, it's always trying to find that sweet spot. Alright. We're going to leave off that.
Encourage development.
Alright, encourage development that is sensitive to the historic context, sense of place and overall setting of the community. And Allison, given that you are our historic preservation planner here at the River Valley Regional Commission, uh, when you're talking about historic context and development, in general, what are, what are you talking about? I, I have no clue. So, I'm just, that's why we have you, so.
Well, Linda can help me with this. Um, it deals with what the area looks like. Does Harris County, did their last comp plan have character areas in it?
It did.
Very similar to character areas. Uh, when you're dealing with a residential area, like maybe here in Hamilton, are there streetlights?
Can y'all hear Allison?
Um, can you hear me okay? Um, um, there are, are there streetlights? How tall are the houses? Um, or how far are they set back from the property line? Are there sidewalks? And we've discussed the, the difficulty of being able to handle things like sidewalks within the county as a whole, and how it's easier to do that on a municipal level. Um, however, it can be, um, the view shed of fields and pastures and, and farmland with, uh, barns and the chicken coops over in Pine Mountain Valley that are very distinctive and part of the rural resettlement, um, that was programmed, that was done by FDR. And it's, it's things of that nature.
If, if we would go to the country store outside of Calhwood Gardens and go to that little parking area and look off, and look to the valley, look at that view, I mean, that's a scenic view. I mean, that's, that's Harris County. Can you imagine if, if that were all developed over there, would that have the same value? Are there other places like that? And does that view need to be protected, or maybe not? Or have some consideration as we do things in that area? Because it draws people, the tourists, it draws people there, and they go there, and every time I go by there, there's always someone in the parking lot looking out over that view. It's a fantastic opportunity for this community as a destination.
I think you have it, looks like me, illustrated, that that's all the conservation farm area on the Land Use Plan.
Question I have is how are we capitalizing on that? Who's capitalizing? Who's, how was that contributing to Harris County?
Well, if, if we are going to go to some kind of ecotourism or tourism and try to regenerate that, are, are we going to see how we can help perpetuate that opportunity?
I can't, people are going there, but where are they spending money? How is that contributing to Harris County?
At the store across the road.
So they're spending money at Calhwood?
Restaurant, yes.
And the, they're part of, what we're going to deal with tonight with the chamber, and their use of hotel, hotel tax to promote the state park. I mean, that could be part of that, that plan. Because we don't right now promote that particular view, or the view from Dallas Nob, or, you know, you might see the view from Dallas Nob in a state brochure.
I'm not opposed to, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to that, but if we're going to say that's protected and we're going to capitalize on that, we got to know how to capitalize on it. Where, where is that investment going, what's the return on that, basically?
And how do you protect it when you're looking out at private property and private land?
Right, you know, the challenges there.
You can't protect that view unless you encourage development that's sensitive to that view.
You know, my, the one thing that pops into my mind, especially when we're talking about, you know, the Harris County Valley, is, is of course the, um, the chicken facility, the cages. And, you know, they, you've got, well, you've got the water tank, you've got the plant, and of course, there's a water tank serves the Valley residents as well. And that would be a terrible example. And say you have a view shed, and, and you can, you can draw a view shed and say, this area has these characteristics, and from a development standpoint, to whatever degree, we would like to have future development in this area to have some of these characteristics and to try to maintain. I never knew about the chicken coops. I didn't know we had historic chicken coops.
There's only like two left.
Two left?
Plus the one that...
Do you know that? You know, or if you're, if you're an industry, you know, maybe there's a design concept or what have you that sort of shields the viewer from, I'm, I'm trying to remember, it's been a long time since I've looked down towards the plant. But, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a situation of, of just requiring some buffering that gets high enough around the plant that helps shield the view. As, as it's, you know, because if you have the view shed, and then they come in, they bring their plans and say, you know, well, this is part of the view shed, but, you know, could you do some legal encypres that are going to get 25 feet? And so, when you're up at the top of the view shed, you know, it's going to mask to a degree X amount. And now whether or not that's something, I'm just trying to come up with something along this line.
If we do see anything new, we're back to, we, we don't want you here unless you look like this. And, and that's bad for business. It really is.
Well, it depends on how bad they want to be here, um, in, in many cases. I can, I, I remember when, when, uh, a couple of businesses that came to La Grange, the city of La Grange, and, and here recently. And they all, you know, talk about, you know, we, we would like to, we would like for your, like the Dollar Generals, I'll use those. They did a bunch of gateway corridors in, in Truitt County and, and did overlay districts. You know, just asking that the Dollar Generals on the front would have some sort of either, either brick or stone facade, and then that go back so far down the left and right walls. And Dollar General's there. You know, they, they did it. They, they, they required so much, uh, planning, buffering, and Dollar General's still there.
Do you think anything about the ugly young signs?
Uh, no, I tell you, that's, you know, when you're dealing with signs, you're dealing with freedom of speech, and ugly counts when it's freedom of speech. It's just, you know, that's their trademark. And so, uh, that's, you know, you can, you can talk about the height. You can, you could even say, we would like for you to have a brown sign, you know, and do some little shrubbers, or it can be this high, but I don't know, just the, the sign face, I sort of like, as far as coloration, I sort of like leaving those alone, it just scares me a little bit, but... But there are some things I think you can do that hopefully, when a business comes in, they're just not going to go, oh, God, I'm not going to do that, they're going to make the plant ponies. You know, plenty of them or whatever. And the, the best example I can give you, in, in my personal experience, diverse power in La Grange. Years ago, when they relocated, uh, out on Davis for the bypass, uh, the CEO, Wayne Livingston, and I, I think very highly of him and hardly even know him. But when they were going to build out there, we said, look, it's all residential out there, would you do, you know, set of buffering with this type of tree, you know, this deep around your facility? And he did it, and, and it looks nice. And when he even expanded it, he did it. You know, there's, there's storage yard for the poles and things like that. He did it, and it just softened the, the facility.
There's a difference between asking somebody to do something and telling somebody they got to do something.
Well, we, we have in our zoning ordinance that you have to have certain buffers between residential and commercial. Those are in place to protect the people in residential, and those are already there. So, so what you're talking about, that's in place. If you want to put a Dollar General somewhere, you've got to have a vegetative buffer undisturbed for a certain amount of feet before you get to the residential.
What I'm trying to get at, what I'm shooting for, just by coming to these meetings, we've been historically hostile to new businesses and new industries in this county, and I want us to quit. That, that's what I'm trying to get to. So how do we quit being historically alienating businesses that want to come here? We get some of them that want to come here and want to be part of this community and, and build infrastructure here. But, but all of these, when you sit there, well, we need to be environmentally sensitive, I, you know, I'm not so much against that, but I'm against regulating to the point where nobody wants to even think about Harris County because they know we're going to pound them into the ground with regulations and this, that, and now we don't really want you here to do it. So how do we be more friendly with these people?
I think that's the balance between, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've been in front of a lot of councils and commissions before. I may be wrong, but I don't, I've never seen, thought of the commissioners as draconian, you know, in their...
And I'm just...
In the way they look at the valley and the, the...
These commissioners here, I'm just saying, historically, over a long period of time in this county, we have not been friendly to new businesses.
That's a statement, sir. So, I mean, it's a balance, again, like she's talking about. You know, we know that we have to do some, some growth and development policies that enhance that. You got to have some balance.
And when they start talking about, well, we want to be encouraged, but we want to be pretty rather than rich. It is what it's boiled down to, and I, I... It is what it's boiled down to. And I, I think we're looking at it. You know, I mean, but I, I, I agree with you. Too much overreach with, well, we, we, you know, it, it, it's just got to be the perfect, perfect little thing that fits right into our niche, you know, but we shouldn't be going, please, anybody who wants to come here, we'd do whatever.
You don't, you don't want the, let's hit the fly with a sledgehammer, let's just hit it with a fly swatter. You know, it's a lot lighter, you know, and, and they're going to find in that sweet spot. And, you know, any, uh, anything that commissioners have to do ordinance wise always has to go through review and adoption and, and a discussion of, and, and, and I understand, especially when you're talking about a view shed, which is a pretty expansive area. You know, if you're, if you were looking at doing some things to try to, I don't know, see mostly green, maybe we could, we could make the water towers green. I know the one in Columbus looks like a mascara brush. It's going to be a cell tower down off Veterans. But, you know, there are, there are, and it's, and communities do that now with cell towers. Ask them, make, make this thing look like a tree. And that's what they do. I think there's two or three in Columbus that's look like trees.
Supposed to look like.
Supposed to look like, supposed to look like trees. And, and those are the things that the cell tower companies will, will do. I mean, if, if that market's strong enough for them and that problem, and if the market's not strong enough for them, then maybe they're going to look a little ensconced in extra regulation. But if they really want to be there, they'll, they'll make the cell tower look like a mascara brush.
And again, that's our problem. I drive out to Midland County and watch your cell bars drop. No, I mean, this is a reality of it.
Yeah.
And, you know, but, well, and the thing is, is it's not beneficial for them to move the tower. I mean, enough people out there that are demanding cell service. So until we develop some of these underdeveloped parts of the county and we get more and more people out there, then there will be a demand for cell towers. Then there will be a de- demand for high-speed internet. That somebody goes, hey, it's economical for us to run fiber out there because there's a bunch of people that want it. But, but they're not going to run fiber down Oak Mountain Road for 10 people. It, it just ain't going to act. You know, so until, unless we encourage this development, we're never going to get the infrastructure that we all want. And quite frankly, I think that we need here in the county.
All right, next one, Allison.
Harris County supports.
All right, Harris County supports appropriate residential, non-residential infill development and redevelopment in ways that complement surrounding areas. And, you know, that's, that's simple enough. That's, that's want to focus on your cities, you know, because they have subdivision areas, what I call the old time subdivision areas with vacant lots and everything else, and they have the existing infrastructure. And so infilling on that existing infrastructure, well, that's, that's a new customer and there's no expense or very little expense for a community when somebody infills. To me, that's a real win-win for a community. Now, you get, even if you get it out to the county with the existing water lines, and every time somebody builds on that existing line, you know, that's a, that's a small expenditure for the, for the county and it's a win-win. You got a, you got a new water customer that's going to purchase your water. The question that comes, you know, when we get close enough to that capacity, you know, we have to expand and do some other things. But all in all, well done, it's not all in all, infill's a very good thing, whether you're in the cities or, or whether you're in the unincorporated area as well. Because there's, even, even if you're, you know, going down a state route, you've got a bunch of houses off the existing state route, there's a vacant lot there and infill, you know, that's a good deal. So more problem, more taxpayers on that road.
Question, you, what additional capacity do you have for Silver? Is there additional capacity there?
Yeah, significantly.
Hamilton's significantly.
Question mark.
I think Hamilton's using, I know they're using less than half.
Less than half.
You got 50, 60, 50% additional capacity.
Probably, well, one of the problems is you have to add extra.
To be, to utilize.
Which is understandable.
You know, if there's one policy or implementation activity, like I said, that we can all agree upon, I'm sure it's infill. You know, it's, it's sort of the no brainer. All right, any other comments on infill? Allison next. I'm gone. And I'm glad we have the chamber here and some other development officials. You know, it's the employee residential ratio. State, local governments and the Chamber of Commerce to track more office, retail, industrial jobs in an effort to balance the existing employee residential ratio. And, uh, and, and I would ask you, could you give us the, the definition of the employee residential ratio, what it means?
Well, I mean, right now in Harris County, our workforce is 16,000 people. Well, probably a little more, probably 16,300 people. Out of that 16,000, 10,000 to 11,000 wake up every day and drive somewhere else to work. 3,000 come into the county primarily at the, off, at the Northwest Harris Business Park where the key suppliers are. Callaway attracts a fair number from out of the county. And then of course, Cook Foods, almost their entire workforce is from out of the county. In 2015, and this number may have increased, but 2015, only 1,500 people lived and worked in Harris County. And so, I mean, as a chamber president, that's a concern mine. Cook is spelled K-O-C-H.
K-O-C-H?
Yes. Uh, so that's a concern mine. And later tonight, we're going to present an economic development strategy to the, uh, an action plan rather than to the commissioners to, to address some of that.
What's the total of Cook Foods' problem today?
I believe about 900, give or take.
What happened to the 1,400 they promised?
I can't answer that question.
Nobody can.
With the employee, the better the ratio is as far as residents to employees, et cetera, and their ability to work here and the number of jobs to residents. It, it's good to have it on that high side, I would assume is what you're getting at.
We'd like to, a, a, a larger number of people be able to live and work in Harris County.
So where, where do you get the 16,300?
That was from the, uh, the Department of Labor issue there, employment report, uh, a week or two ago. Um, I, I can't, I pulled my email, but they sent it to me that our employment's about 16,000. It may, it may be 500. I mean, let me pull it up. Don't hold me to a number. It's over 16,000, but it's not 17,000. The population's 34,000. The remainder is retired folks and kids. Right now, we have less than 500 people who are unemployed in the county. Period.
That's very good.
Yeah, it's excellent. Now, there's no doubt there are women in the county, but the number of people who are able to live and work in the county is, is very low. And, and a lot of that has to do with the south, you know, 315 below, those folks work in Columbus. I mean, that, when you've got 6,000 of those folks waking up every day and driving to Columbus to go to work, I mean, that, that accounts for a big chunk of that.
And 2,000 of those go to Fort Benham.
Probably, yeah. When I say Columbus, I mean kind of.
Yeah, and all the tax dollars go with them.
Well, and that gets into the, the, the sales tax. I mean, our, our county, our school system, uh, you know, do rely on the sales tax to do something. And those folks who drive to Columbus on their way home, stop the grocery store in Columbus and buy groceries and other stuff. So, I mean, that, so that number is not just a, that has an impact on government revenues and other things.
I would say that it's not a large number of people, but a number of people live in Harris County and West Point. And they live in Harris County, but they work right across the line in West Point.
That's right. That's exactly right.
They live in the same town as other counties.
But they do their shopping in West Point as well.
Yes.
About, yeah.
All right, next. Okay, uh, one of the other comments was plans should have protected dense, uh, projected densities. Development, maintain comprehensive plan, develop the densities. I, that's all I had and, you know, along those, you know, along that thought. And I guess the, the point, uh, as we do the character areas and we, and we do that, you know, we talk about, you know, one acre in size lot or two acres in size lot or one. I'm not quite sure if we mentioned one unit per acre or not. But the thought there is as we go through the land use stuff and the character areas, you know, is it, is it four units per acre, you know, you would just list in this area or these, these pockets with this color, you know, we want 10 units an acre. Or we want five, one unit per 10 acres. And so, um, I can't remember who actually brought that up. I can see his face. He's a gentleman sitting here in the front row. But that's something here again, if y'all think that's, I mean, we do that in a, in an inadvertent way, you know, when you're talking about single-family housing. And I think we even mentioned the, the acreage as well. Uh, but I would just have to go back and check that. But if we add areas, you know, where you want to see more multi-family development or just higher single-family townhome development, then we must put the density in there. So when somebody comes in, they look at the plan and they go, oh, yeah, in this area, it's pretty clear. They, they wanted single-family housing, townhome type, five units. You know, five units every 15,000 square feet or something, you know, whatever, whatever would be determined and decided by those of you that sit in the office or out in the chairs and by the commissioners. So I think that's what they were trying to get at. And so that just, I'll open that back up because the gentleman, I, I believe that brought that up and I was going on memory, you know, was talking about adding those densities. I, I think it's a good idea. What do y'all think as far as adding densities to the various character areas in the comp plan?
I think that belongs in the zoning map and not the comp plan.
I agree.
It's interesting flexibility because you're trying to develop all this, huh?
No, I'm sure we're trying to develop it all there.
You're trying, you're trying to open it up a little bit. You need to add some flexibility.
Right, I don't, I, I do think. I do think it's more a zoning issue than a, than a planning issue.
Yes, sir. A little bit of history. I mean, you hear a lot of rumors and how it started, but how did we get to a two-acre minimum for the whole county?
Oh, you got me.
At the time, there were, there was a large contingent that wanted to argue for a five-acre minimum. And this was basically the folks that wanted to slow down the growth. Because it was, it goes back to 2004, '05, '06, when the boom was going and we were building new, new single-family residences like crazy. We had 440 some odd in a year. And it was an attempt to try and slow that down. And I think the two, the two acres frankly was, was kind of a compromise because there were a lot of folks that wanted something real big. They wanted in growth, period.
I would argue that that did not, that's kind of the way to do it. If you want to do what you need to do, make areas higher intensity so you can have areas with a lot of old density. Because the same number of people come.
That's why we, that's why the grove actually was bad. Was to try and do that, was to concentrate in a smaller area that would at least leave parts and portions of the county green for a longer period of time.
And if we leave it like it is, you don't want the whole county as two-acre minimum.
Is it not true that on the ballot in the primary, with a runoff on the other, that this question was asked of the voters and they chose to keep the two, the two-acre minimum?
That was a Republican primary.
That was a Republican.
It was a strong question.
Strong question, yeah.
Look, look at the county commission. How many Democrats?
I, I think also the reason for the two acres was because of soil issues and being able to do wells and septic tanks on, on a one-acre lot with the size, especially with the size house that was being built. The houses were much bigger than they, they had been. And so there was less room to do the well and the septic both.
We're finding lots now where the health department will tell you, if you have an existing one-acre lot that's out there that's recorded and planted and you want to go build a four-bedroom house on it, you're going to be, have to be careful depending on the soils. And their biggest, I think part of the two, I agree with her completely, that part of the two-acre minimum was set, but, uh, I don't know if it was ever brought up at that time, but it worked out good for the county because the saturation level of soils was key, a key factor now. It is definitely a key factor now when you talk to the health department.
But either the soils work or they don't. And we have three-quarter acre lots, we have half-acre lots on the river.
Yeah, but you can't put a five-acre, I mean, a five-bedroom house on a three-acre.
Well, I agree. I mean, that's why you have rules and standards as it relates to the number of bedrooms and baths. And utilization soil, but that's not using the land efficiently. You know, you know, we, that's to me, the bigger question is what is the commission and what is the? You can have a little bit of everything. I mean, there are counties that have certain areas that have higher density, lower density, I mean, you know, horse farms. I mean, you can have a combination of all different types. That's something that we can do.
I knew, our new PRD model, the first thing you have to do is tie into the municipal sewage.
What about, what about the rest of the 90% of the area that doesn't town the sewage, Brian?
No, that's part of it. I mean, that's, and you're looking at areas around Pine Mountain, Hamilton and the southern edge of Kent.
Right.
West Point.
In West Point, yeah. But you're right that.
I mean, I think it's great. I don't, I don't have any problem. But I think also there needs to be some thought, consideration on remaining areas that there's natural path of growth that don't have sewage.
I would say that a lot of people are just kind of going to two-acre minimum because we're not presenting them with a viable option. In fact, they just, they just, that's all they know. So that's what they're stuck with. Instead of getting some, some alternates there to bounce off, think about it. Look, I, I live in the middle of probably, I would say one of the prettiest places in Harris County. And I don't see it coming there. But if it comes there, you know, I better be in a position to either one, buy the property next to me so they can't come next to me or shut up.
There's going to be forces.
You know, that's the deal.
All right. I'm not quite sure, you know, we got two comments there again, leave them out. I, I'll go back to the old, old document and see how we have it in there currently and then just go from there, so. All right, rails, trails, and this goes back to the, really the other four recreation items I was talking about earlier. Uh, the policy, work with federal, state, nonprofit organizations, develop and manage rail lines. Plus the trails, and I know, I know Harris County's been working on that.
Brand new, yes.
So, and could you give them a little insight on that?
I would say, uh, we, we don't, the county did lot and received three grants, three federal grants. Uh, and when you include the grant and the required matches, it's about 1.2 million dollars. That will get you from downtown Pine Mountain to maybe behind the Callaway Villas. And that should start in January. Another one's been written and submitted for almost $2 million. And we'll know next month if we are going to receive that. And that will get you from the Villas to the Callaway Country Store as a destination. Crossing over the trestle that is going to require some attention. So these are active projects. The project is well-received by the state and all the funding agencies. And they mentioned, they will mention the same theme when they were awarded to the county. This project, the Russell Trails project, is listed numerous times in numerous locations in the, in the current comp plan. They, that went through a public process and a, and therefore the public is aware of it and they support it. Without the Russell Trails being highly documented in the current comp plan, I would doubt we would get those grants.
Well, they made sure we documented it pretty good last time. They made sure we documented it pretty good last time, so...
And then I would, anything that we need to write a grant for in the future, that we put those in this plan, to point that it went through a public process, whatever those items may be.
But I mean, in those areas that aren't planned for immediate development, are there resources within the county to maintain those right-ofways, so they do not become overgrown and essentially destroyed, that we try to maintain? Because you have those gravel beds, it's wonder if there's any resources, either through grants or other things, to maintain those right-ofways in a reasonable condition for future development?
The only thing is, the Parks and Recreation Department has limited resources spraying insecticide.
Insecticide?
And weed killers.
Oh, herbicides.
Herbicides.
Okay.
And no, sides.
No, no, the sides.
That's about, that's all we're doing, but I think we're losing more.
Just suggesting something to think about, you know, it's important to get it done. In the meantime, as we start getting three, four, five-inch sweetgums, other things going in there, that may be something, if it's a valuable resource, maybe not for this meeting, because I didn't even think about it.
Randy, are there any other things, you're talking about the rail, trails, or some other areas in here, that you may have a suggestion that we could include in the comp plan, that went up?
Me and Rip talk all the time, we got, I got, we got lots of suggestions.
You know, some of what we need...
Eldery Park would be a good one.
I mean, is there any infrastructure stuff that's available, any kind of grants?
They're, they're too small, and, and maybe some of these are the ones you apply to. You do have a Rails to Trails grant through DNR. You also, it's, it's an outdoor recreation trail grant. For instance, the, the loop that was built in Shiloh, where you have the gazebo, that was all done, I think, years ago, for the outdoor recreation trails grant. They have, each one's now on a different cycle, and I can't remember, there's one coming up in October, October 31st. It is...
Land and Water.
Land and Water Conservation Fund. And I think that's a 50/50 program.
That's right.
They put up 50%, you put up 50%, but, but, but don't hold me to it. There are other, there are other pots out there, and like I said, the, the next one that's coming up is Land and Water Conservation. They allow you to do certain things, some of it has to do with existing trail, some of it has to do with developing trail. And I think some of it, well, like in Shiloh, has to do with maintaining existing trails.
I think what Craig's talking about here, though, is something, when he says infrastructure, he's talking about bringing sewer water to places where we can further develop things, others, other...
Between any of the granters, I just saw local. Is there a creative or state, or what, I'm just asking?
CDPG, the, the biggest fund we use, I mean, there's, the biggest one we use out of our office is the Community Development Block Grant Process, and Harris County's used it two or three times now.
Sure, the problem with that is, the problem with that is, Lord of Modern Income people have to be recipients, and it's only like $750,000 tops. That doesn't get you much more in sewer. The most, I think the most common way to get into the water sewer business is the use of debt, revenue bonds. You know, $20 million top revenue bonds, to build a water plant, to, to run, to do a design, to, you know, to install a water and sewer line. It's a major, major, major undertaking.
Derek, we're SBA, who love the user plan, you know, interest rate goes, is that a lot of dish, or do they give us a lot of heat?
So, there's no, that infrastructure, I'm particularly interested, and it's really broad language, too. And I understand the reason for it, is because it's included in the plan, and therefore, you can apply for grants for. That means there are things that we would want to apply for, that we legally can apply for under this, under this plan, is that not so? The language is broad enough to do a lot of stuff.
Exactly, but these grant folks, they know what they're reading. You know, if a policy is, we want more recreation, well, that's one thing. But we want Rails to Trails recreation, they target that, and it makes your grant application that much more successful. More that it has gone through a public process, the community wants it, and has been vetted. What they don't find, these agencies, what they don't find, is something you thought about last week, and you throw a grant together, hoping to get it, when it has not gone through a public process. That's the one that you don't like getting funded.
There are other programs, Georgia Environmental Finance Authority has money for infrastructure. We just had their rep come by a couple weeks ago, and give us a brochure. Most of their stuff is all low-interest loan, low-interest loans, things of that nature, and bonding and everything else, so. There, there are plenty of groups out there, most of our communities, the debt, they need it free, or, and, and, no, they just need it free. A lot of ours can't even handle a low-interest loan, you know, because the books and the balance sheets just aren't, aren't that good.
That's a move in the city council in Shiloh, I'm engaged in trying to get these grants as well. The fact of the matter is, we're trying to get grants, combination that is $21 trillion in debt, and how much longer is this going to be?
I guess we need to get it while we can, so. Let's all belly out to buffet bar. Anything else on the, on the trail? And one of the things I was going to add, what, what they do like you to do off of the trail, is, is not just to have a trail, but to have a trail, and as the community develops, connect to those future developments, with little sidecars or side rails. And, and that's something, you know, as, as the county's going along, and even when they get into developed areas, if, if we end up taking the trail all the way down to Columbus, in Muskogee County, there's a lot of neighborhoods, I'm going to, without looking at the map, you know, they're probably right off that trail. It's trying to get those neighborhoods connected, so they have access to the trail. And that may be 20 yards, it may be 30 yards, you know, of just a paved path, to allow people who want to get on the trail and bike, to do so, without having to put their bike on their car, you know, go down to the depot in Columbus, where that rail line comes through. You know, it's, it's about connectivity, and, and that's something, you know, that I'll just add in there. Not only just having a trail, but connecting to the trail. All right, Allison?
It's 1.2, not 3.2. That's a special thing.
Christmas is around the corner. All right, marketing the county to families, not retirees, you know, here again, it's, you know, the families are very active, dynamic, I'm not saying retire, retirees are not an active dynamic, because they are, the families just tend to move a little bit faster. And, you know, with the families, obviously, you get that synergy, you get that energy, and it's, it's probably more consumer spending associated with that, what's?
They cost a lot.
Well, they do.
They send them to school.
Send them to private school.
Are we marketing managers, charities?
Pardon?
Are we marketing retirees?
I don't think you get, I don't think it's against law to market any class in Georgia. I mean, it's not right, it's against law.
I don't think we want to market, I don't think we want to market to drive the water and kind of develop the students.
Yes, it does, it's against law.
All right, you got your death facts. Is that the last one, Allison? No? Uh, these were out of the, this last one, I think, it's been mentioned several times, and it was in the chamber, in the chamber plan. Engage state, local, and educational leaders to develop a college and career academy in Harris County, and I know that's in the process, I believe that's in the process of trying to get that.
It is, I don't know that I was presented with comprehensive planning.
I don't think it's our role to be supportive of the Board of Education.
There's nothing, I mean, that's the plan.
It's our role to support it.
That's right, that's the plan, but there's nothing that says it's going to happen. I'd hate to know that that was in the plan, if y'all would.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Y'all wouldn't even want it in the economic development section of, as a...
We, we have a, you'll see tonight, we have it in our workforce development section, the economic development action plan, is to have the county commission support the creation of the college and career academy. And it's really undefined, the way we've said it, because we don't, obviously, we don't have correct roles, it just, you know, we're appropriate support. We won't know exactly what, what we can and can't do until the end of this month.
Okay. Um, well, let me ask you this, if we don't need a, a policy on it, can it, can it just be a mention in the, in our economic development section in the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm really hoping you take my economic development language and stick it in.
I would do that, exactly.
Save you a lot of editing.
I, I, I like plagiarism, I know a lot of people don't.
You're playing plagiarism by giving permission.
That's right.
This should be the last.
All right, um, and we also talked about benchmarks. Somebody brought up review the comprehensive plan, and set benchmarks on what you want to accomplish, and things like that. The policy, review comprehensive plan benchmarks on a regular basis. Now, let me tell you what we do, from our standpoint. Every other year, we do a plan assess, we have, we hold plan assessment meetings, with all the counties, the cities, all through our region, and we go over the implementation program. And we also go over our regional requirements, and maps, and, and all of that. So we go over what's been accomplished and what hasn't been accomplished now. And, and that obviously gives them an idea of, you know, a, a good scorecard of what they've done and not done. Now, I don't know if you want to expand on that, or, you know, what do you want to do to refine that? I mean, it, it does get done to a certain degree, when we need every other year, but is there something else we need to do with that? Any comments? I think, again, the, the comment was, how do we hold, I don't know, hold us, you, you know, or even hold the citizens accountable for, you know, what we say we're going to do, and do we do it? But that is one mechanism that is in place. Now, there could be two or three other mechanisms, I don't know if the county has something in mind, if that's something they're just going to talk about. Y'all, now, now, let's not get talking out there. First part of the meeting, you wouldn't even talk, now they ain't talking to each other.
I think it's called an election.
Election.
I think much of it is.
All right. It's an election. So if I just mentioned, let me put it to you this way, if I just mentioned in there, we, you know, as one of, we have the plan review process every other year, is, is that fine? With y'all, I mean, it, it does take place, they, they make us prove that it took place. Plus the election, or, it, it doesn't even need to be in there, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Can it be updated? Not necessarily every year, but can the plan be updated?
Yes, you can, you can update the plan every year, and go through the implementation measures, if the county so desires. I'm not sure...
That costs money, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, I, I know none of our counties do that.
What if we...
But I'm, I'm not quite sure how many in the state, but that doesn't make any difference.
But what if we made it as an annex, or some component of the plan, so all you're looking at is two to three pages you're looking at, saying, make reference to the 2019, 2020 update of that annex, you're not talking about the whole plan, but a small piece of that plan, that feeds back, so it keeps it current. I don't know if that's feasible, has it been done before?
Not that I'm aware of, I know, let me put it this way, I know we haven't done it.
No, doing the whole plan is, we're definitely, we've got to do components, saying, benchmarks, if that's one or two pages staying in there, so just look at it, update it, and put it back as an updated annex, and put it on, so the public knows about it.
Yeah, and the, and the plan implementation measures, they have a year, like 2018, 2019, you know, those sorts of things that you could, you could update. And I, I'm assuming that you could do that, but it, that's going to be the decision of the council, if, if they want to go through that process on a yearly basis.
Our county manager will be doing it, so, we're doing it, so.
It'll stay alive.
Staff will do an annual review.
And it'll stay alive, yeah, I bet every five years.
Yeah, the plan every five years, we do the plan implementation every other year, so, I'm not quite sure what one-year difference makes from the, you know, body of annual...
If the comp plan is reviewed during the budget process, to take names out of the comp plan and projects, and see if the board will, you know, activate those.
So that's really what, what God's talking about.
That's the viatation. So they can cross references, so then, the community knows where that is, and could follow if they wanted to.
That's where some of the cap improvement in CIP projects came from.
So that, other than the election, it seems like that's, you know, you're, during the budget cycle.
Now, I, I just read on the DC website last week, the comp, the comp plan that we're doing, updating right now, DC is always changing the rules. Are there new rules coming out in late 2018?
Yes.
Okay, I read one that is adding a new element for broadband.
Yes.
Is that going to affect us?
Yes.
So we're going to have...
We have to include it in the plan.
So we, so we have elements of housing, and transportation, and land use, now there's a new element called broadband, to address broadband, or the lack of in the county, to determine what our plans are. So we're going to incorporate that in this?
Yes. Go ahead, Allison.
It requires that the county pass an ordinance, was it an ordinance or a resolution?
Resolution.
A resolution stating whether you feel, or the county commissioners feel, the county is well-served by the existing broadband market, or whether you're not well-served. And that has to be stated in that resolution, that's part of the new law, the new rules that have been passed.
And we can also state in here that our, our latest splotch is $1 million in broadband?
Yes.
And hopefully that'll cover it, I don't think it has to be this...
No, it won't.
You don't think it'll cover it? No, no, I'm not talking about the 1 million, I'm talking about covering the regulation of having broadband. Yeah, no, I...
It's, it's got about this much description of what the state wants you to see, so, there's not much guidance really in there. I, I can only think that the state wants, as a whole, to get an idea of how all the counties are being served.
We're also going to reference, you know, the state, we partnered with a group several years to do, to do a general broadband plan. And I'm not quite sure, I, I didn't do it, Jim Livingston, our economic development director, did. But, you know, we can also just use that as a reference, you know, in the document as well, as your activities in the, in the splotch, and things like that, with the broad, and, and I think the, you include the resolution, and that covers them. You know, it's just a statement of, we feel we're being served, not served, this is what's been going on, this is what we're doing, and I think we're good to go.
There's a GMA Rural Broadband Summit on Thursday, everyone's going to participate. Juan Robbins? I'm going.
Jim, Jim's going, yeah.
Jimmy might go, I'm as well, I can't, I don't know.
I'm not quite sure where I'm supposed to be, Thursday, but it's not there, I do know that. Yes, sir?
I'm sure specifically we're talking about a benchmark.
In my mind, we're talking about timetable, before we talk about land use, maps, and who's going to have those, and be, and find those, and when are we going to redo the ordinances, the zoning ordinances, and building licenses, and all that. We need some kind of timetable of when that's going to be done, not just some random, we're going to look at. We plan to do it, we need to know, because that affects, I mean, we talk about what builds goes, and what builds shouldn't, some of that affects us, and it affects us as well. And we, we kind of need a timetable, so we can, people don't do anything until they know they're up against that line, so let's set one.
I can, I can tell you this, that an implementation program, you know, that's part of the plan, you know, every item, like I said, does have a time, you know, finish 2018, or 2019, or, or just 2019, or 2021, it has to be within that five-year planning period. You know, as far as the comp plan, of course, that's got to be signed off on in June. How would you, it's easy enough to do the timetable, how would you like that delivered to you, or how would you, would, is that something you physically want?
I'd like to see, I want to start, and want to be finished next year. I mean, whatever that is, you need to know when you're going to start, and when you're I mean, whatever that is, you need to know when you're going to start and when you're going to finish. I'd like to see somebody in charge of economic development, I mean, it shouldn't have to fall solely on the chambers. Need to do that, eh? Now, we need, we need some accountability that, I mean, we just don't leave it out there, open-ended, that someone could say, well, it's in the plan. Well, yes, in the plan, but what are we doing about the plan? When's it supposed to be finished?
Well, that's been talked about constantly. Um, it, it's well established, you do the comp plan first, which is the big broad view, and then that leads to the zoning rules and all the, all the regulations. So it was determined a long time ago to do the comp plan, turn it in by the deadline of next June, and then immediately start on the zoning rules and the subdivision rates and all those, and update that.
But we're doing the comp plan before we even know what we're trying to plan for.
Well, the comp plan is the broad brush, and the zoning rules and all those regulations is the finer brush. So the comp plan's done first, and, and proper planning rules are right.
Well, what I'm saying is you don't even have the hands to brush on it. We don't even know where we go, we don't even know what to brush, we don't even know what code, we don't have an easel, we don't have anything. We're just out there developing at two acre blocks.
Well, but, but, but you may not, you may disagree, but that has been the decision. And the decision has been made, and it's been codified. Now, we're going to look at, in next budget year, beginning July first, um, I'm going to put in the budget, if a board will approve it, probably, you know, hundred thousand type dollars to hire a professional to come in and look at all of our ordinances, zoning rules, subdivision rates, side ordinance, and all, all those things, have data and modernize them.
It's not a matter of creating this green, it's a matter of having, having business and we not having business.
Well, I think we get to have all of these conversations and get all this input, and see what the chamber has, what those committees have developed, and that, that plan. I think that then gives us more direction.
But he, he made the first point, it's all been discussed, but that's all we've had so far in discussion. We've had discussion for ten years, we hadn't done any. So I would like to see some deadlines in there to hold some people accountable, so that we can get to the true accountability of the next elections and when we say, this ain't happening, there you go.
I like that, yeah, have we talked about that?
Yeah, I can guarantee you one thing, in the next budget process, staff will request the proper amount of money. But it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars or more to have a professional come down, um, from somewhere, wherever that may be, to update all of our zoning rules and regulations.
Is that a permanent position or a consultant?
I'd say consultant, to begin with.
Oh, we're looking at economic development person too, we're going to rely on the chamber from now on.
But in my opinion, depending on the resources, we're looking at the chamber for the next several years, so.
Right, and, and the chamber's not empowered to do economic development, because we don't have the, we don't have the authority on behalf of the county to make deals. And that, if you're going to be the economic developer, this is, you got an authority of the county, we don't have the authority of the county.
Between the chamber doing marketing and the development authority doing the deals, there's your economic development plan.
The development authority here to now has not been given the authority to make any kind of deals. We have been held under the thumb.
And I can't tell you, I mean, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus and say names, but when I go out, I mean, we're, we're seen as hard to deal with. Harris County is, from the economic development standpoint, I don't care who you talk to.
I have to agree with you on that.
I mean, we really are. So we need somebody, they don't know who to talk to, they get a different word from everybody, there needs to be somebody as, as a point person.
I know, uh, our chairman's referenced this several times in meetings, when I became a commissioner, I said, you're the county's master.
Well, I, I, this is real slot, I wouldn't say it's just another tail.
I would disagree completely, because I've seen this county grow in itself with building permits and, I, I mean, I know, I don't know if you're just talking about industrial-type economic development, but we're doing more building permits.
My, my residential.
Okay, but, but that is part of it, in my mind.
Residential is painfully obvious.
And what we've also got is, we've got more businesses in the county as far as whether they be commercial or home occupation than we've ever had in the county. And that's what we've seen is a growth pattern in those things.
But the home occupation doesn't generate much revenue.
It doesn't generate much revenue, that's right, but.
We don't have anybody looking at it overall.
But I think, and I think what you're doing is looking more like to these large industry-type facilities or, you know, some, kind of like your dealers at the end of the mall, your painter points.
Any industry. We've got, we have a basic plan that we're going to present tonight, it's an outline, it's the first time since I've been back in twenty years that we actually have a document. It's maybe better than a plan, a plan that will.
It's the development authority in the chamber.
Well, it's, it's a plan that whoever wants to get involved.
No, I'm not saying the plan's a bad thing, I'm just saying, we're in the county, don't have anybody that is a point person, I do that, delegate it out.
Right.
Uh, any other?
Private on that.
No.
But my philosophy has always been, we may have to say no, but there's another part of that. Let me sit down with you and see how we can help you, and if we may not be able to, but we don't do that, it's just, no, and it's.